Good evening, welcome. Pam, would you please note that everyone is present with the exception of Ms. Robles, who unfortunately is out ill today? Mr. Hernandez, would you mind leading us to the pledge allegiance? Good evening, by the way.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Item 1.4, approval minutes, none. Item 1.6, Pam, has anybody signed up to speak under open forum?
I did not pick up a forum for Dr. Fox.
Is anyone here to speak under open forum? Yes, sir, please, you're welcome. If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself, where?
All right, good evening, my name's Ernesto Morales, I'm the principal at Lydia Patterson First of all, I'd like to say that I love our relationship with EPCC and the services we provide our students through the dual credit program. As I understand it, we do have, or you all have some conversations going forward about how to charge schools for the services that you provide. I think it'd be best, if you all don't mind, if I read an email that summarizes the sentiment of Lydia Patterson as far as some of the charges that have occurred last year and that will occur, may or may not occur this year, from our chief financial officer to Dr. Sarata today? Would that be okay?
Mr. Morales, you're welcome to read it, please.
Oh, thank you so much. Okay, so, "On behalf of our school, I would like to thank you for allowing us to be a part of this program. We continue to carry out our mission of providing quality education to the financially challenged, as was the objective of our founder Lydia Patterson in 1913. As the one responsible for the financial viability of the school, I want to bring to your attention an issue that has threatened the continuation of this program. The latter part of October of 2017, we unexpectedly received a very large invoice for $9,074.87 billing us for the fall of 2016 and the spring of 2017. We were never notified before each of the respective semesters started or ended that there would be billings forthcoming. Typically invoices are sent when goods and services are rendered, not five months later. I did what any other CFO would do, I started asking questions and requested records of prior billings and payments to compare and analyze from our business office, only to discover we had never paid for such costs in the past. I authorized a partial payment to protect the relationship with EPCC, but I regret doing so as I had to consume resources for other planned expenses. In reading the signed agreement, I learned under Section 211 E2, when EPCC provides the instructor online onsite, tuition and fees will be waived, provided the school pays for the instructor's cost and mileage. I wonder why we were never billed before 2016? How are schools to plan budgets and manage resources when we have no idea when we will be charged and for what amounts? In reviewing our agreement contract, I do see these elements: offer, acceptance, competent parties, lawful subject matter, and mutuality of obligation, but I am concerned about the following element that is not present: consideration, specific dollar values. How are we to be held to this agreement? Thus, I am respectfully requesting your assistance in resolving the past and potential future issues, as we are not, we're a not-for-profit private school, which our current tuition rates do not cover the full cost of educating a child, as we rely on donations to meet said obligations. This business model is not conducive in paying exorbitant, unexpected, unplanned charges relating to the dual credit program." So, all of that respectfully, it is our dire situation that we're in, so I'm looking forward to future conversations that hopefully will be had to resolve that. Our concern is mainly last year and this year. We are glad to hear that, moving forward, there will be a plan that we can budget for, and that's it. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Morales, thank you for being here this evening, and just, we appreciate the partnership with Lydia Patterson and look forward to the opportunity of us working further and closer and closer in the future. I encourage you to, tomorrow morning, to reach out to Dr. Sarata, and I'm sure that we could, we're gonna be able to move forward and work together.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. Anyone else under open forum?
Item 1.7, presentations by individuals, groups, and organizations. Item 1.7.1, Dr. William Sarata, college president, will recognize individuals who have retired from the college district.
So, this is always a time, Chair Fero, members of the board, these are bittersweet, they're sweet for the individual in that they've earned their retirement, they're bitter for us at the institution, have gotten to know them and worked with them for a period of time. So, before I read the formal bio, and I'll ask Mr. Romero to please come up and join me, but before I read the formal bio of Mr. Romero, so my first day on the job was August 1st, 2012, and as I walked onto this, into this office and was very honored and privileged to walk on, the first person who greeted me at approximately 7:30 in the morning was this gentleman right here with a nice smile, came up to me, shook my hand, introduced himself, and said, you know, "I'm Ernie Romero, this is what I do at the institution, welcome, we're so glad that you're here." And what I said is, immediately on August 20th, I did a convocation, state of the college, and he was the first person that I mentioned, because if everyone at the institution treated every student, more importantly than staff and myself, like he treated me, our rates would continue to rise. So, he was just certainly a model, someone that I had the privilege, again, the first person outside of the interview committee that I got to meet at the institution, so this is certainly personal for me. Mr. Ernesto Romero began his career here at El Paso Community College in July of 1997. He was initially assigned to the physical plant construction department. Mr. Romero was promoted to head maintenance worker and assigned to the grounds crew. During his career at El Paso Community College, he worked at all five campuses, as well as here at the Administrative Services Center. Ernie was honored by the IE Committee as Employee of the Month once, while he worked at the Administrative Service Center three times at the Rio Grande Campus and once at the Trans Mountain Campus. People will always remember Ernie's warm smile and magnetic personality, his way of making people feel at ease. Ernie is a devoted family man and can always be counted upon to let you know how his family is doing. Plans to spend his retirement here in El Paso with his wife and visit his children and grandchildren in San Antonio. Ernie, we will miss you, I will miss you, but we wish you nothing but the best in retirement, you have earned it. Thank you for 21 years of dedicated service to El Paso Community College, and remember, you are always welcome to come back and visit with us or come out of retirement, should you choose. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much for making up those terms.
It's all about students. It's all about students.
Yes, always.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good person, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like him to talk to us.
Item 1.7.2, Mr. Eric Pearson, president of the El Paso Community Foundation, and members of the Down Syndrome Coalition will present a check to EPCC.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, thank you for having us, this is Evelyn Grace, she's seven years
Hi, Emily.
Eric can be here, my name's Felipe Martinez, I'm the president of the Down Syndrome Coalition. We are proud to say that we are part of 170 walks that take place throughout the country. The walk is called the Buddy Walk and was brought here to El Paso by one of EPC's finest, Ms. Joyce Cordell, in the marketing department. In 2015, we flipped roles, we took care of the logistics, we were thankful for what EPCC had done, we were ready to take it, and we've been growing ever since, we've awarded over 35 scholarships to students with disabilities, very proud to have said that. We continue to do more, our first walk hosted about 400 people, last year we had over 1,300. So, we are growing, like I said, we're very proud of the partnership, and thank you so much for the support, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations.
She usually comes and shakes hands with us.
Yeah.
Item 1.7.3, Mr. Alan Potter with Romano and Associates, an authorized agent for SBA Towers, will make a presentation for the possible installation of a wireless communications facility at the Valle Verde Campus.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Board of Trustees, my name is Alan Potter, I'm with Romano and Associates of Albuquerque, New Mexico. We are the authorized agent for SBA Communications, and I've been asked to come by this evening and give you a brief presentation on a proposal that we would like you to take under consideration. And if you notice, I see you have monitors the screen, this is a PowerPoint presentation that we put together for your benefit to give you a overview of the highlights of our proposal that we would like you to take under consideration. And just maybe before we start the PowerPoint, I'd like to just kind of give you a little global picture of what I usually tell boards and commissions that I speak to. Wireless communications started out in the mid-'80s as something new, exciting, very expensive, and not available to a lot of people. And then in the '90s and in the 2000s, we saw the explosion of cellphone use in this country. And today, many people rely upon their wireless phone without even having a landline phone in their home. The wireless phone has really revolutionized communications, not only is it used to make phone calls, but nowadays we're using it to send text messages, or to search the internet for things that we're looking to buy or go see, or to share information with others through data transmissions, and also to look at videos online. So, when we think of wireless phones, it's not just the phone that we're gonna use to call our loved ones at home or our boss at work, it's a tool that we're using to navigate through life each day. The wireless phones that we call smartphones now have really taxed the wireless networks of all the major providers in the country. So, there's a tremendous growth and tremendous need for wireless companies like Verizon Wireless, which will be part of this program, of this proposal, to build new infrastructure, to be able to support the use of the smartphones throughout our communities. El Paso is a growing community, and you have a lot of need for development, and increased use of the phones has made a lot of work for us in the industry to help support that through infrastructure development or building new sites. Now, we'll go ahead and start with the PowerPoint. Again, this is a proposed wireless communications facility, or what some people refer to as a cellphone tower, at the Valle Verde Campus. The objectives here are sort of what I've just been talking about, to enhance network signal strength and capacity on campus and the surrounding residential areas. When people are using their phones, sometimes they'll not have any problems at all, they'll be able to make their call, download their data, watch their video, send their texts, and be totally pleased with the performance of their phone and the service they've signed up for. But on occasion, if there's some kind of event going on, or if it's 5 o'clock at night and people are going home from work, or if it's the weekend and there's a game somewhere and everybody's excited about going to it and they're texting each other, there'll be quite a bit of stress put on the network, and it will cause, at times, for slow service, for inability to make a call, or for your videos or for your downloads, just to not react as quickly as you would like. So, what Verizon is trying to do here, who will be the user of this facility, is to enhance their strength and capability, make sure they have good signal to everybody in the area at all times. And another important thing to remember is that the wireless system does support 911. The E911 system relies upon the wireless services, so anybody with any phone can use that phone to call 911 in an emergency event. So, it's important, not only for convenience and the things that we expect out of our phones, but also in those emergency times that we all sometimes, unfortunately, run across. This facility we're proposing is a multi-carrier facility, that means that more than one carrier could possibly use it. At this time Verizon will be the tenant that would be occupying the facility. We don't anticipate interference with any other campus activity. The site is designed to blend in with the surrounding area. We will comply with the city of El Paso requirements, and namely that is through their land use approval process. And that process is quite involved, and it does take sometimes up to a year to get through the process, but myself and my associates at Romano and Associates are well aware of that, and we are experienced in dealing with the city. And this actually is a partner, we become a partner with the community college for a mutual benefit. You're providing us a location, and we're providing financial incentives to you, and we're providing a service, not only to the residents in the area, but users that may be attending college at the campus as well. This is an overview of the location, this is going to be in a landscape area, we won't be losing any parking, so this is a small piece of ground that isn't being used, or is not, won't be decommissioned for some other use. The site layout is, again, very small, it's a 17-foot by 50-foot-six lease area. The leased area will be enclosed with the block wall, as you've seen on the drawing there, that'll match the existing campus architecture, so again, it blends in with the existing structures in the area. The elevation, this is an elevation drawing of the proposed tower. This will be 75 feet tall, it will have the antennas concealed in a canister at the top, and then there will be streetlights mounted at the 24-foot level on the tower, so that it also provides lighting in the parking lot. This is a rendering, or what we call a photo sim, this is what it will look like if it were to be built. This is from Phoenix Avenue at Del Monte Street. Let me go back here, and this is from College Creek. The whole idea with these renderings or photo sims is to give you an idea of what they would appear on the landscape if they were built. This is an up-close, as you can see, the long canister tube-like structure at the very top of the pole will contain all of the equipment, the antenna equipment specifically. This type of canister helps to smooth out the design of the tower and not make it quite as noticeable as you would see a regular cell tower that you might notice. And then below at the 24-foot level, you'll see the two arms that are sticking out, those are the lights that'll provide parking lot lighting. One of the things that's real helpful sometimes, even though we do provide these photo sims, is to take a look at what these are in real life. These are sites in Albuquerque, New Mexico, and I used to live in Albuquerque, and I am sort of familiar with these sites, so I can attest to this, these are accurate photo representations. This is similar in Albuquerque, and this is another one, actually, this one, there's two of them, I used to go to Coffey, not too far from where those are located, so I'm very familiar with that site. Another view for you. That is what the facility would look like that we're proposing. Next on the PowerPoint in front of you are the proposed contract terms, and this is really important, that we give you the bullet points on this, so that you can consider this and the benefits that this would bring to the college. This is a 25-year lease, it's written in five-year terms. SBA, the developer, is responsible for all the construction and development costs and operation costs, or no costs to the college whatsoever. SBA will maintain a $1 million insurance policy against any losses that are caused by this site. The lease agreement was reviewed by the college attorney, as well as by SBA's in-house attorneys, and we have an agreed-upon document or contract that is ready to be reviewed by you and then executed if you accept it. This lease agreement that we're proposing comes with an option period. The option period is two one-year periods, and each time we pay you a one-time fee for the option period. The reason we ask for an option period before we commence with the lease is that we have to go through the zoning process with the city of El Paso. We also have to go through a very extensive FCC review. Every cell tower that's built in the United States has to be reviewed by the federal government, and it requires us to do a substantial amount of paperwork to look at any potential environmental impacts that the site might cause, any impacts or any concerns that the site might be to historical values, structures in the area, things like that. So, the option period gives us a chance to go through those processes, make sure that we meet and can get those approved without actually starting the lease agreement. Once we've gone through all that, have all our permits and approvals in place, then we will commence the lease, and that's when the compensation section of the lease would then fall into place. And we're proposing a $24,000 annual rent to be paid for the use of the property. Every five years, there'll be an increase on that rent based on the CPI with a maximum percentage, a maximum 10% increase possible. So, as the lease grows in time, over 25 years, the monthly payment or the yearly payment will not remain stagnant, it will increase to keep pace with inflation. And the other really big, important thing about this agreement is that we're offering a $75,000 one-time payment at the commencement of construction. That payment is made to the college, it can be used whatever way the college wishes, it doesn't have to be connected to or any kind of development around this site. So, that is a substantial bonus to be paid at one time. I have been working in the wireless industry since 1990 in various markets throughout the western United States, and here in the El Paso market and New Mexico, as well as where I worked, these terms we're offering are substantial. I cannot think of any other contract that I've been involved with in the last couple of years that even approaches this type of financial incentives. So, I really would like to stress that that's a very good package for the college, and we have been working on this program, this proposal, excuse me, for about two years, and this is where we're at today. Presentation is designed to give you information, so that you can make a decision, hopefully, on taking this, the next step would be for your approval, exercising, entering into the lease agreement, and starting the development process to get our approvals. If I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to.
Mr. Potter, thank you very much for the information. I'd like to remind the board that the way this is posted, it's an information item only, so when it's posted as action item, we'll be able to ask more specific questions.
But we can ask questions right now?
We're not supposed to ask questions.
I'm not supposed to ask questions, okay.
Thank you very much for the information, sir.
You're welcome, sir, thank you.
Item 1.7.4, optional presentations will be made by the presidents of the Classified Staff Association, the Professional Staff Association, the Faculty Association, and the Student Government Association.
Okay, I think the other organizations don't have a presentation, and so, my name is Rudy Hernandez, I'm here for the Faculty Association. I'm the vice president for full-time faculty, and Ms. Becky Bell, our president, is handing you out this little presentation that I'm gonna give you, so that you guys can follow me, instead of just having to listen. And I want to give recognition to Ms. Rebecca Bell, she's our president, and she's done an excellent job for us, we're very, very happy with the way she represents us. And so, my job, you know, she'll give, she gives you the specifics of what the faculty do to benefit the college and the students, and I kind of want to give you an overall picture of things, to let you know what it is that we do and how we serve the college, the students, and the community. Okay, first of all, full-time faculty include professors, associate professors, lecturers, and of course, our colleagues, the adjuncts. To give you an idea, our classes begin at 6:00 a.m. in the morning, so there's somebody that has to teach those. They run through the day, the afternoon, the evening, and then sometimes not until 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night, and of course, we also service our students on the weekends. So, it's your educators, the faculty, that are providing those classes for the students and for the community. Your educators teach these morning, afternoon, evening, night, and weekend classes. Faculty help our college compete with part-time temporary colleges, that's the way I'll call it, so that I can stay nice, by providing El Paso with a quality and affordable college education, and I think that's very important. The community college provides that quality and affordable education for the citizens of El Paso. Your students go on to universities throughout the nation. I have a student who went on to Our Lady of the Lake and then Stanford University. I have students in graduate schools at UTEP, NMSU, New Mexico, Colorado, and three at ASU, and the reason I know this, because they asked me for letters of recommendation, and then I only asked from them, they let, that they let me know if they got in, and they did. and it requires us to do a substantial amount of paperwork to look at any potential environmental impacts that the site might cause, any impacts or any concerns that the site might, might be to historical values, structures in the area, things like that. So the option period gives us a chance to go through those processes, make sure that we meet and can get those approved without actually starting the lease agreement. Once we've gone through all that, have all our permits and approvals in place, then we will commence the lease, and that's when the compensation section of the lease would then fall into place. And we're proposing a twenty-four-thousand-dollar annual rent to be paid for the use of the property. Every five years, there'll be an increase on that rent based on the CPI with a maximum percentage of ten, maximum ten percent increase possible. So as the lease grows in time over twenty-five years, the monthly payment or the yearly payment will not remain stagnant. It will increase to keep pace with inflation. And the other really big, important thing about this agreement is that we're offering a seventy-five-thousand-dollar one-time payment at the commencement of construction. That payment is made to the college. It can be used whatever way the college wishes. It doesn't have to be connected to or any kind of development around this site. So that is a, that's a substantial bonus to be paid at one time. I have been working in the wireless industry since nineteen ninety in various markets throughout the western United States, and here in the El Paso market and in New Mexico, as well as where I worked, these terms we're offering are substantial. I cannot think of any other contract that I've been involved with in the last couple of years that even approaches this type of financial incentives. So I really would like to stress that that's a very good package for the college. And we have been working on this program, this proposal, excuse me, for about two years, and this is where we're at today. Presentation is designed to give you information so that you can make a decision, hopefully, on taking this. The next step would be for your approval, exercising, entering into the lease agreement, and starting the development process to get our approvals. If I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to.
Mr. Potter, thank you very much for the, for the information. I'd like to remind the board that the way this is posted, it's an information item only. So when, when it's posted as action item, we'll be able to ask more specific questions.
But we can ask questions right now?
We're not supposed to ask questions.
I'm not supposed to ask questions, okay.
Thank you very much for the information, sir.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you.
Item one point seven point four, optional presentations will be made by the presidents of the Classified Staff Association, the Professional Staff Association, the Faculty Association, and the Student Government Association.
Okay, I think the other organizations don't have a presentation, and so my name is Rudy Hernandez. I'm here for the Faculty Association. I'm the vice president for full-time faculty, and Ms. Becky Bell, our president, is handing you out this little presentation that I'm going to give you so that you guys can follow me instead of just having to listen. And I want to give recognition to Ms. Rebecca Bell. She's our president, and she's done an excellent job for us. We're very, very happy with the way she represents us. And so my job, you know, she'll give, she gives you the specifics of what the faculty do to benefit the college and the students, and I kind of want to give you an overall picture of things to let you know what it is that we do and how we serve the college, the students, and the community. Okay, first of all, full-time faculty include professors, associate professors, lecturers, and of course, our colleagues, the adjuncts. To give you an idea, our classes begin at six a.m. in the morning, so there's somebody that has to teach those. They run through the day, the afternoon, the evening, and then sometimes not until nine or ten, ten o'clock at night, and of course, we also service our students on the weekends. So it's your educators, the faculty, that are providing those classes for the students and for the community. Your educators teach these morning, afternoon, evening, night, and weekend classes. Faculty help our college compete with part-time temporary colleges, that's the way I'll call it, so that I can stay nice, by providing El Paso with a quality and affordable college education. I think that's very important. The community college provides that quality and affordable education for the citizens of El Paso. Your students go on to universities throughout the nation. I have a student who went on to Our Lady of the Lake and then Stanford University. I have students in graduate schools at UTEP, NMSU, New Mexico, Colorado, and three at ASU, and the reason I know this is because they asked me for letters of recommendation, and then I only asked from them, they let, that they let me know if they got in, and they did, okay? But the best part about it is that all of your educators, all of the professor, professionals and the professors have similar experiences with their students. This college is providing a good, quality, and affordable education to the citizens of El Paso. Okay, because of that, we are also grateful to the staff and administrators, and of course, to the board for the support that you all have given us. After their education here at EPCC, students go on with their lives and succeed in education, their careers, and we all know the fame of the nursing, nursing program we have here, and in having a better life in general with their families as a result of their educators and their education here at EPCC. Many of our students go on to graduate, and they provide a great example for their siblings and for their children in the future. So it's something that really does last a long time. Of course, the college's educators and students receive support from the college's staff, professional staff, and administrators. Speaking of administrators, uh-oh, not really. Actually, we have very supportive administrators, and we're very grateful for that. All administrators pull together to help us educate our students and provide them with the best educational experience anywhere. It's not a love fest, I guarantee. Sometimes we disagree with administration because we each have our different interests and our responsibilities pulling, pulling us to the different areas that help us do our job. Sometimes we have to agree to disagree, but we do so in a professional and respectful manner, and then we seek to resolve our differences. So we're, we're very pleased to be able to work with administration. They listen to us, and we hopefully listen to them as well. But overall, Dr. Sarata and vice president of Instruction Steve Smith listened to us and have been very supportive, and the board has also. I also wanted at this time to give thanks to the vice president of Student Services, Dr. Gonzalez, because without him, our students wouldn't get admitted, registered, and financed. So we really appreciate that because he gets them in here. Last year's pay, to show, you know, to give thanks again to the board, last year's pay increase demonstrated the board's and administration's support and appreciation of we, the educators, do for our students, and we appreciate that. After all, remember that educators also have bills to pay and families to support, and you guys have given us that support. We cannot do, we cannot work for benevolence only, okay? We ask the board to continue to show its support for its educators, administrators, and staff so that we can continue to provide the quality and affordable education that El Paso students and the community deserve and need. In summary, all educa, as educators, your faculty, we make education available to our students at all times of the day, night, and weekends. That's what makes EPCC competitive. Faculty make our college competitive with any other college. We work hard and support families as much as anyone, just like everyone does. We appreciate the administration's support, though we may not always agree on everything, they are supportive and appreciate us. We appreciate the board's support, but please remember that we as educators are at the heart of this educational institution, and so everybody is important. All, and although all faculty are not here at every board meeting, Ms. Bell adequately and well represents us, focusing on what you do, we ask for your support, respect, and attention while we keep our focus and attention on the students, their education, and their future. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Item...
Do we ask questions here?
Yeah.
Did you have a comment? Yeah, you can make a comment, yes. Mr. Hernandez?
I appreciate, John, I appreciate very much this. I'm just wondering, you close, you have to end in here and say that you appreciate, we appreciate what we're doing, we thank you, and we thank you for recognizing all this, and then you, we ask the board to continue to show its support, and so it makes me wonder, what kind of support are you asking? Are you, are you asking us for consideration of an additional raise? Is that what's going? Okay, or you just want us to, to give you recognition, a pat on the back?
Basically, the support that you all have given us in the past.
Okay.
Yes, of course, you guys gave us, you know, what we thought was a pretty, a good raise last year.
Okay, we appreciate that.
But you guys also support administration, you support the programs and the different vice presidents that are here, and that in turn helps us as educators for the college, and we then get to serve the students. So it's basically an overall thanks, not just one specific thing.
Okay, and as, as an old person that has been through industry and some of the other things, let me, just a slight suggestion.
Okay.
Start off with appreciation and support. You start saying all these nice things, and every time we keep hearing nice things and nice things and nice things, the question always hangs around in my mind, what, where are you going and what are you asking for? So, so what I'm saying is you should start off with appreciation, then you can say based on that. But what happened is that you lose our attention, or at least it is my attention.
Okay.
Because I'm used to seeing, sitting there at the desk, and I have the engineers and they have other people come up to me and ask for this and that. They need to ask me in the first five, ten seconds what it is they want, and then, then we'll go into the whys and the appreciation. So next time, when you do this, tell us, we really appreciate you and thank you and everything, and then here's why, as opposed to spending a lot of time because we keep wondering, or I keep wondering, so where are you going?
Well, I, I appreciate that, and I'll certainly correct that. But I also wanted you all to know that we teach from six in the morning till ten at night. You know, somebody, sometimes people just hear about faculty, and we teach on weekends, and we teach at all the campuses, and I kind of wanted to give you a little bit of information.
Oh, we, we really appreciate that, those of us that have worked twenty-four, seven, and, and up at six and have been reviewing papers. Yeah, we, we appreciate those kinds of efforts, so we're all in the same boat.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Exer. Thank you.
Item one point eight, communications, none. Item one point nine, Board of Trustees, business. Item one point nine point one, the Board of Trustees will discuss security matters.
Dr. Sarata, for our next board meeting, I believe this would be an executive session item, would you please schedule the chief to give us a update and synopsis on security of, of the campuses? And, of course, Dr. Hiron.
Will do, yes, sir.
Item one point ten, Board Reports. Item one point ten point one, Treasures Report, January thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. No action is necessary. Item one point one zero point two, President's Report. Item one point one zero point two point one, Dr. Sarata will update the Board of Trustees and audience on recent events that have transpired at the college.
Chair Fierro, members of the board, always an honor to provide a slight glimpse, and Mr. Exer, I'll heed your advice and go quick and hit the points. Again, the college was honored to host an event with the Texas Tribune on Wednesday, February seventh, two thousand eighteen, here in the ASC Auditorium. Event was incredibly well-attended, featured a discussion with Texas Tribune CEO Evan Smith and El Paso Mayor Dean Margul. Many thanks to the faculty, staff, as well as our trustees who were able to attend. Congratulations to Associate Vice President Carrie Moe for her leadership and outstanding organization in the event, as well as Jim Heine and the marketing team. Professional Development Day for the staff was held on February the eighth, with each of the divisions within the college hosting training sessions for their respective employees. I'd like to also kudos Dr. Sarah Goldrick-Robb, who is the author of Paying the Price: How College Costs Affects Students of the, of the Paso del Norte region and what we can do about it, address faculty, staff, and students here in the ASC Boardroom on February the ninth from one-thirty to three-thirty. Again, congratulations and kudos to AVP Carrie Moe for her leadership and coordination of the event. We held our first groundbreaking for the master plan. That was held on Thursday, February the fifteenth at ten a.m. at the Trans Mountain Campus. Many thanks to the board members that were able to attend, Chair Fierro, Vice Chair Hagerty, Judge Hagerty, Secretary Solis, Mrs. Robles, Ms. Nahada, Mr. Exer, all of our board members that were able to attend, as well as the faculty and staff, Dean Evler, Dean Webb. Kudos to each of them, as well as to Ms. Moe, who coordinated the event. Lots of folks that were involved, Mass Communications, Instructional Media Services, the theater facilities and physical plan, our culinary arts folks, our police department, obviously our project manager ECM and Dan Tex. Great partnership with Texas Mutual Insurance continues, so please join us. Mark your calendar for March the seventh at eleven a.m. here at the ASC Building B foyer for a grant award ceremony where the EPCC Risk Management Institute will be presented with a one-hundred-thousand-dollar grant award check. This will bring the total award to date to four-hundred-thousand dollars. Through the partnership, the Risk Management Institute offers free ongoing seminars to local area employees and the general public focusing on safety and awareness in the workplace. They have since inception have trained fifteen-hundred-and-twenty-eight students totaling twenty-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifteen contact hours. Kudos and congratulations to Mr. Barry Bogel, who's the Director of Law Enforcement Training Academy, Ms. Cecilia Maurer, Institute Program Coordinator, and Dr. Jaime Farias, who's the AVP for Workforce and Continuing Ed, as well as special thanks to Mr. Smith, who started this partnership back in two thousand fifteen. Our Pathways journey, Guided Pathways continues to move forward, and we, we have launched Phase Two of that. On the thirty-first of January, we kicked off Pathways two-point-O with a visit from our A-two-I-two director, Dr. Rob Johnstone. Pathways two-point-O aims to implement EPCC guided pathway reforms, including integrating meta-majors and program maps into advising and registration processes, and developing technology tools to make the maps accessible, relevant, and helpful to students. Dr. Johnstone met with several different areas of the institution and constituents, excited about what he'll be able to provide to us. Special thanks to Margie Nelson Rodriguez, who's the Instructional Pathways liaison, Dr. Marsha Pierce, who's the Texas Pathways liaison, and the VP Smith for the leadership and oversight of this important student success initiative. Always proud to share that we have no shortage of volunteers at the college when it comes to serve in our community. On January thirtieth, Ms. Linda Cropper and Chef Daniel Geta participated at the Sierra Blanca School Career Day, where they highlighted their programs to seventh, for seventh to twelfth graders, students from surrounding ISDs. Ms. Cropper highlighted the tiers program, while Chef Geta introduced the students to different degree plans and options between culinary hospitality operations and travel and tourism. As a special treat, Chef Geta provided a demo on how to make a tri-color orzo salad and provided pastry samples baked by our students. So many thanks to Linda Cropper, as well as to Chef Geta and all of the folks there. Great ambassadors, and work inspires the youth in our community to pursue higher education. Thank you, Dean Webb, for your leadership and encouragement of these great efforts. Another example of APCC faculty and students stepping up to volunteer their time was demonstrated at the recent Seventh Annual Young Achievers Forum, held at UTEP on Saturday, February twenty-fourth. This was the second time that they asked El Paso Community College to take part, so the first five years, they did it without us, but they have now asked us to participate. We had a record number of twenty-seven faculty who gave up their Saturday and volunteered to present and highlight EPCC programs to approximately, approximately one thousand sixth graders and their parents from El Paso-area school districts. Thank you so much to our faculty and our students for being great ambassadors and helping to make a difference for so many kids in our community. Sharing your experience and expertise for multiple disciplines is invaluable, much appreciated. Would not be possible without the coordination and support from all the deans, VP Smith, and Rachel Veramontes in Mr. Smith's office. Rachel actually was the point person for this and did a tremendous job. Department of State Health Services recently conducted an unannounced evaluation of our EMT basic course taught here at the ASC. Site visitor found all course records and program, and the program in compliance with state rules. Congratulations to the EMT Program Coordinator, Mr. Tony Ayu. Clinical Coordinators, Mr. Carlos Prado and Mr. Tim Grover. Adjunct Faculty Member, Rebecca Manriquez, whose class was evaluated, and, and to Dr. Paula Mitchell, who serves as the campus dean. And then finally, the Commission on Accreditation for Health Informatics and Information Management Education, they have an acronym that I won't repeat, reported that the two thousand seventeen annual progress, program assessment of the Health Information Management Program has met all standards, and the program remains in good standing and maintains accreditation. Congratulations to Ms. Jean Garrison, the Program Coordinator, Ms. Monica Jewell, Health Information Technology Faculty, and again, Dr. Paula Mitchell, who serves as the campus dean. That concludes my report, Chair.
Another busy schedule. Thank you, Dr. Sarata.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Sarata, we have a, a board member serves on the Texas Workforce Commission, don't we?
We do. Dr. Graham serves on the Texas Workforce at the state level and continues to open doors for us. In fact, one of the items that Dr. Graham is looking at and asking that we research, Chair, and members of the board, is the incarcerated population.
Sir, I'm glad you're going to cover that because Mr. Fierro just bypassed me when I was going to ask you if you can give us an update on that.
Absolutely, Dr. Graham. So Dr. Graham always, and actually, he, Dr. Carpenter, remembered you specifically. So this is a program that offers K through twelve instruction for over sixty-eight-thousand prisoners, to really provide them an education so that we eliminate recidivism of prisoners getting out and having no future to look forward to and then ending up going back into the system. They, they handle the K through twelve, but they do partner with a number of colleges on post-secondary opportunities for the same population, something that you're very interested in, as are, as am I and the rest of the college, to serve our entire community. And so what we exchanged emails, we're going to work on our schedules, Dr. Graham, and as well as your calendar, to see when he can come out and visit and tour us of the Sanchez Prison Complex and the work that they're doing. That's one of his campuses. I'm certainly excited about this. An opportunity, Ms. Solis, you've brought this up many times too in your work, you know, by third grade, if, if we're not, if we don't have students up to speed, the likelihood for them to be incarcerated is incredibly high. The latest data that I saw is that one out of every fifteen individuals born two thousand eleven or later will at one point in their lives be incarcerated. One out of every three African-American males born at two thousand ten or later will be incarcerated unless we change this, and this is the first step. So thank you, Dr. Graham. Thank you, Chair Fierro.
Dr. Graham, there's a gentleman out of New England with the community college, his name is Michael Young. He serves on Diversity Committee with me. His college has a very, a very strong program that goes out and works with the correctional units, so there's a, there's a good way of us to maybe partner up with the program that you're trying to introduce K through twelve and then with this, the community college component. So I think it's a great opportunity for us.
Thank you. I think we can maybe get a follow-up from you in a couple of months and see where we're at.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Sir, would you also share the other part of the handout that I had? Because I really think that we need to participate in this in the community college. I'm sorry that the student association was not present, but I think that we really need to see who we can recruit to participate in this Armed Forces Day parade.
I think Dr. Gonzalez is raising his arm.
Well, that would be great. It might be our recruitment tool.
Absolutely.
Here you go, sir.
Yeah, we will share the information, Dr. Graham. Obviously, it's scheduled for Saturday, May the nineteenth at Fort Bliss. We'll celebrate Ms. Solis's birthday as well as having the parade. They're doing a parade just for you.
Maybe we can sit on the parade?
Yes. But we absolutely will, will look at participating. We obviously have had a robust partnership. The college started at Fort Bliss, and we all know what we're planning on, the campus at Fort Bliss, so absolutely, we'll share this information and get this out to the college.
Some of us started with the college at Fort Bliss at the barracks.
Logan Heights? Logan Heights, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Item number one, item one point one-one, Consent Docket. I believe this includes items three point two and eight point one.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fierro.
Aye.
Item two point zero, Administration. Item two point one point one, the following policies presented for second reading and/or final approval. Item 2.0, Administration. Item 2.1.1, The following policies presented for second reading and/or final approval, 7.08.02, Access to Education Records.
Move to approve.
Second.
Questions? We're ready, Pam.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Item 3.1, Full-Time Institutionally Funded Actions.
Motion to approve item 3.1, 3.1, no, 3.1.
And 3.3?
No, no action.
Go on a second.
Second.
Second?
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Ms. Solis. Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Item 3.3, Information Items, No Action Is Required. Item 4.1, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of a Contract with Campus Labs Incorporated to Provide a Web-Based Platform to Collaborating in the Development of Accreditation Reports in an Amount Not to Exceed $180,487.
Move to approve.
Second.
Questions? Ready?
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Item 4.2, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval to Increase Tuition Rates, Tuition and Fee Rates for Resident and Non-Resident Students Effective the Fall of 2018 Semester.
Make a motion to approve item 4.2 with the effective rate at $11 per hour.
Second.
Any questions?
A little steep.
Was that a question or comment?
Comment.
Not as steep as 12. Pam, I think we're ready for the question.
What is that?
I had a question slash comment. If we were to, if the board were to approve an $11 tuition increase, would that then allow the students to, two years down the road, not be subjected to another tuition increase? Is that the idea behind it?
Yeah, Ms. Solis, I'll begin, and then I'll let Vice President Shaughnessy chime in as well. So the board asked us now, over two years ago, to develop a two-year tuition structure so that our students could plan for a two-year time period, and so the tuition increase is more significant in order to ensure that. The one caveat that we have included, and we don't know what's going to happen with the 2019 legislative session, what I can tell you is that what we're being told is the state is starting somewhere between $6.8 and $9 billion in the red, and that the whole session is going to focus on Hurricane Harvey and the relief effort for Hurricane Harvey. So we are going to advocate, attack at the college level, at our board members' level, but we don't know what kind of session we're going to have. What I would tell you is that this tuition increase that the board just proposed would take us for two years, subject to finding out what the state does to the institution, which will begin in the fall of 19.
Wait, the tuition proposed that's in the agenda by the...
Is through 2020.
So the $8 or the $11?
Both. We're through 20. The point is that this would go through the summer of 2020. What we've always told the board is, with the legislative session coming up, if, for some reason, the state proposes a draconian cut, that we could come back to the board with options. It is not our intent to do that, but given the fact we don't know where we're going to be in 2019, that's why we leave that caveat to the board.
Ms. Shaughnessy, is there any feedback from the students during the Tuition and Fees Committee meetings, as far as what the students voiced, or any feedback? I remember the first, one of my first votes on the board in 2013 was a tuition fee increase, and I went against, I voted against the proposed one by the administration.
I remember.
Because I believe it was Josh Estrada, actually, that was a student, Carter, sorry, at the time, was asking the board to actually go higher in the tuition increase, because precisely something that has been a topic of discussion is that the students just want it to know, you know, want to know exactly what it's going to be, and not every two years have an increase and increase. Was there any discussion like that in the Tuition and Fees Committee meetings?
Not exactly like that. Actually, we had two presentations to the Tuition and Fees Committee, and we also had a presentation to the Student Association, Student Government Association, so they understood what is it that we were recommending, and they also understood that we could come back. We could come back next year in light of any decrease in state funding. So nobody was really asking for the tuition to be higher. However, they understood that it was necessary. What we were proposing is to fund a budget that was going to continue the kind of services that we provide, we continue the funding of some of the items we have funded over the years due to tuition increases.
And still be the best value.
And still be the best value. So it was unanimous, the whole Tuition and Fees Committee voted unanimously, and we have not had any questions from the students after we presented on February the 7th to the Student Government Association.
And that was for the $8 increase?
Yes, ma'am.
And that would give us how much? How much additional funding would that be?
So $8 would give us additional $3.1 million, net $3.1 million, and with the $11 one that is being, at this time, recommended. And I just wanted to remind the board, it is not just for the rate increases, also for the non-resident students. So the $11, I think you are recommending may be for resident students, and we also were recommending a different rate for the non-resident students, and we also have additional fees that we are recommending. But for the $11, the $11, that would be about $4.4 million additional for $11.
Okay. Any other questions?
My question is, is that you didn't get any response at $8. You didn't recommend.
Well, what we...
You didn't even bring up $11.
No, we recommended the $8. The final recommendation was $8, because we felt like that was a reasonable request, but nobody came back and said, you know, why don't you do lower or higher? They pretty much accepted our recommendation.
At $8?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion second. No other questions? Pam, can you call a vote?
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Item 5.1, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval to Award a Contract to Pride General Contractors for Construction of Offices and Conference Rooms to House the Grants Management Department at the Administrative Service Center A Building in the Amount of $412,500.
Move to approve.
Second.
Questions?
Just, how many people are we talking about moving, more or less?
Currently, Grants Management is, has moved from the Queen Anne Building. They've already in this facility, in a temporary area, which is the architectural space, and I believe, oh, I'm not sure exactly, I want to say about 12, 15 people.
Because they're bringing in a lot of money, so we should give them the best.
We will make sure they have nice offices, Dr. Graham.
Yes, they'll bring in more men.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Item 6.1, Consideration and Deliberation on the Acceptance of Funding from the Defense Logistics Agency, Department of Defense, for the Contract Opportunity Center in the Amount of $300,000.
Move to approve. 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3.
How about 6.4? It's also an acceptance of a grant.
And 6.4.
Thank you.
You'll second it?
Did you second it?
Oh, second, yes.
Item 6.2, Consideration and Deliberation on the Acceptance of an Annual Award from the Texas Mutual Insurance Company in the Amount of $100,000. Item 6.3, Consideration and Deliberation on the Acceptance of a Grant from the City of El Paso for the Northwest Community Library in the Amount of $37,000. And item 6.4, Consideration and Deliberation on the Acceptance of a Grant Award from the Institute for Mexicans Abroad, IME, in the Amount of $25,000.
Any questions? Pam, we're ready?
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Item 6.5, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of the Restated and Amended Dual-Credit Partnership Agreement.
Move to approve.
I have some questions on that.
I'll second it, and Dr. Graham, go, please.
Okay. So on page 49, which would be Section C, 3C?
6, 6.5.
A high school student shall not be enrolled in more courses than allowed by the state law and Texas Administrative Code and Regulations. Do we just want to leave that blank, or do we want to have some specificity as to what courses? Or is everybody assumed to know which courses?
It's, I'll begin, and I'll let Mr. Smith. It's a great question, Dr. Graham, and so the law used to be six hours per term for juniors and seniors, and then in 2015, the legislation was changed and opened it up. And so what we're saying now is that we're going to base, because every session, we know that this coming session, there's going to be more specific rules that come forward. So we're just leaving it more to follow in line with Administrative Code and Regulations due to the changes. We're not putting a specific number, because right now, there isn't a specific number.
Okay, thank you. And then on 6A, if the course involved, blah, 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 and then in the high school involved is otherwise unable to offer such a course, are they allowed to offer an equivalent course, or no?
So, Dr. Graham, this section talks about the composition of the course?
Correct.
The students that are sitting in the class, and the current blueprint calls for dual credit classes to be made up of only dual credit students, with the exception that if there's a burden on the high school, an exception can be made, and so that's what that clause is.
By the college?
It takes both approval from the college and approval from the principal at the school.
And should we not clarify that, or is that clear? I mean, it wasn't clear to me, but maybe it is too.
I think similar to the first question, you know, we try to future-proof some of these agreements, because the rules change periodically, and so I think that's why we want to leave those pretty generic as well.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry, but I have some other questions on, and I would have called you earlier, but 7C, on the Qualified EPCC Selected and Trained Dual-Credit High School Instructor, blah, blah, blah. Do we want to be specific on what kind of training they are expected to comply with?
We certainly could clarify that. This speaks to their professional development training that we typically do at the beginning of the semester, the new faculty orientation. Again, if we start to delineate those things too specifically in agreement, and then things change, we then have to bring changes back to the board as we amend the MOUs.
Okay. On that same letter E, no, I'm sorry, F, in the event a high school credential faculty is absent more than three days, are those three days throughout the year, three days a semester, three consecutive days?
Typically, three consecutive days.
Can we add the word consecutive in there? Only because otherwise, it's leaving it, you know, I mean, I'm sure most instructors have more than three days' absences at the school districts per year.
We certainly could look at adding that, absolutely.
The consecutive, and then again, you know, on that same, the professional development, it's not compatible with all the districts, because all the, or several of the districts have different calendars.
Calendars, yeah.
So that paragraph, to me, just needs a little bit more clarification. The next one would be on 8B. The changing of the books, do we need any clarification as to how often this can change? Textbook lists?
Yeah, as a corollary to this MOU, we have a textbook procedure at the college, which spells out the exact timeframes that schools can use textbooks, and in our case, it's typically four years that the ISDs are able to use those textbooks. Dean Bedio's office tracks the usage of those textbooks and takes the opportunity to tell the school districts when it's time to change and update their textbooks. This particular clause is in there because what we were finding was that we would have classroom sets of textbooks, and students weren't being allowed to take the books home
Right.
to study. So that's what that second part of that is explaining.
On letter D, the onsite facilitators, do we, you know, to enhance the success of dual-credit students enrolling online courses, but to me, it doesn't make it clear that they are not allowed to teach the college course, the facilitators.
We certainly could clarify that. That is part of the blueprint.
But can you clarify it? I would just feel more comfortable if we're clear about that. Otherwise, it's easy for, you know, for the districts to just pick up a facilitator and say they're the dual-credit, I mean, I've seen it. People that are just facilitators and call themselves dual-credit teachers, and they are not, because the criteria is so different.
Yeah, we can certainly clarify that role.
I would just feel more comfortable if we can clarify that D. B, on number nine, does this, the way that it's worded, does it make it clear that it meets the special ed or 504 criteria? Because again, at the high school levels, we have a lot of the dual-credit students that are under 504 or special ed umbrellas.
We typically handle those things on a case-by-case basis. I know that Dean Bedio has been involved in a number of specific instances related to these types of accommodations. I might invite her up to share a little bit about how we handle those things. But we work closely with our CSD department, as well as our counterparts in the schools. We're able to accommodate, but not modify, curriculum for dual-credit classes.
And just as long as, we're making it clear for the districts, I know you guys have it clear in your mind, but, you know, that the districts understand it the same way we do. The letter C on nine, provide training, towards the end of that, EPCC will provide training for the high school counselor designate, and when does that happen? Where? How? Do we need to go into specifics about that?
Again, we probably could put very specific items in there, but then, if we were to change how we're handling that, we would bring the MOU back to the board. That currently is being handled every semester, under the auspices of Dean Bedio's office.
Okay.
We've hired a dedicated suite of counselors for dual-credit, and they're going out to the school districts, training all of the counselors there.
Okay. And on letter C, seven, I'm sorry, not seven, 11, we're getting towards the end, 11C. I just wondered if we need any more clarification as, you know, the payment, so that we don't end up with this kind of problem as to, I didn't know that we had to pay type of situation. So the question would be, who at the district will they need to pay, or do we need to add that so that there's no misunderstanding that we're doing this pro bono?
I might invite Ms. Shaughnessy to talk about how we're invoicing those school districts and tracking that particular payment.
Because it's my understanding that this was always in here, correct? This isn't new?
100 wasn't, but everything else, yeah.
Okay.
So, Dr. Graham, what we're going to be doing is not even just for the registration fee, and the reason why we are assessing that is because if they register after census date, we cannot pay them for state funding. But for all, for all the different fees here that we're going to be assessing, is we will be, they will be invoiced within 30 days, and we do have that itemized under 11E, where we actually talk about when we're providing the instructor, then the school district will be invoiced within 30 days after the end of the semester. And so we're going to be getting some information from our research department to be able to identify those students, those dual-credit students that have been... identify those, those students, those dual-credit students that have been taught by an EPCC instructor, or have. We also get the information from, from the admissions office in terms of those students that also have not met the registration time period. So, they will be invoiced by the accounting department.
Okay. But I have a question to follow up, Dr. Graham. Have all the, will all the schools be notified in a general letter that this is now going to be implemented, or this is something they already have? Okay, so it's, no one's going to be caught off guard, or this is not going to be a surprise, or we hope?
Correct.
Okay.
It will, we will not, we'll be working on make sure that it is not a surprise. I think at this point, it's not a surprise anymore.
I think so, okay. Thank you, Dr.
And my last question would be, in reference to the, the EPCC has an honors program that is kind of overlooked. Should we not mention it here at all in this?
Yeah, we, we could certainly add an opportunity for honors credit. We typically provide the information to the dual-credit instructors as part of the new faculty orientation and professional development training. That's something that's really up to the instructors to handle, but we could clarify that in the MOU if you feel that's appropriate.
The only time I have a concern with that is, you know, when it becomes a problem and somebody complains, either a parent complains of something, then, then the tool that we have to explain or provide clarity is the existing MOU. So, but it doesn't mention anything about the students' rights. Would that, would that be the rights of the, any college student? Or do the students enrolled in dual-credit have different, you know, and usually, it's when they're questioning grades, or practices, or assignments?
So, dual-credit students are our students, and for the most part, they're entitled to all the same rights and have all the same responsibilities that our traditional students have. And so, our grade appeal process is the same for students that are taking dual-credit classes. So, any of those kind of redresses follow the same processes and procedures that we follow for our regular students.
Okay. So, usually, I send those problems your way anyway, but, but the honors program, I think definitely needs to be mentioned in the MOU. Thank you. That's it.
We will make those corrections and then bring it back to the board. Does the, would you?
I think we can vote on it.
You're comfortable?
I'm comfortable that you are addressing.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? Pam, we're ready?
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Item 7.1, consideration and deliberation on the acceptance of grant funding from the Texas Governor's Office to purchase active shooter rifle-resistant vests in the amount of $24,292.
Move to approve?
Questions? Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Ms. Gonzalez, how many vests will that purchase?
Forty-two.
Chief, Judge Hagerty already did the math. Thank you.
It's on your, it's on your agenda.
He cheated, but that's okay. Thank you.
Sorry, Dan, thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
You're welcome.
You're amazing.
Item 7.2, consideration and deliberation on the approval to enter into a sublease agreement with Missionary Radio Evangelism Incorporated Les Or and the City of El Paso lessee for the installation of new EPCC Police Department Digital Radio Communication System on the Franklin Mountain Walton Peak Communication Site in the amount not to exceed $22,000.
Move to approve?
Second, but I didn't understand what this was about.
Radio system.
This will allow us to activate our radio communication system. So, we have everything in place. This is kind of the final piece that we needed to put in place to make it active.
But why are we going with a missionary radio evangelism, something or other? I'm sorry, are we joining with a church, or what?
We're praying it works. They're the owners.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody can talk on the same channel.
Yeah, that part of God. I just, do you know if they're the leasing entity, or?
Yes, ma'am, ma'am. Good evening, everybody. Yes, they, basically, they, they own the land, they own the tower that's on the mountain, and they sublease it to the city. So, what we need to do is get, sign a lease with them through the city, because they own the, the property. Yes, ma'am.
So, is it going to give you access to communication with the other police departments?
Yes, it will. The, we, we presently have that, that ability right now, but it's not fully functional until the, the, the microwave receptacles or the microwaves is, are actually installed. And as Dr. Gonzalez mentioned, that's our last piece. We have the radios, we have the transponders located in the different campuses. So, that's our last piece, so.
And do you have enough radios for all your officers?
Yes, ma'am. We have enough, one, yes, we have one, one for each, and then we have a, a few additionals. Yes, we do.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief. Pam, can we go back and visit item 4.2, please? Any other questions?
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Item 4.2.
Please. I've been asked to clarify my motion. My, my motion was to, let's see here, consider delivering the approval of increased tuition and fees for resident and non-resident rates effective fall 2018. The motion was to increase $11 for resident per hour. Increase the non-resident to $14. Let's see here, increase, increase the, the distance education and three-peat fees of $15 and vehicle registration of, I'm sorry, three-peat of $5 and vehicle registration to $15. My intention was to have that all part of my motion.
So, increase distance 15, three-peat 5, and vehicle registration 15.
Increase distant, no, distant and three-peat of $5.
Oh, both of those 5. Are we revoting, or just clarifying the motion?
I'm clarifying my motion.
Thank you. Item 7.3.
Move to approve?
You want me to read it first? Item 7.3, consideration and deliberation on the approval of continuing education tuition rates for new courses.
It's because I read my agenda, guys.
Second.
I do have a question.
Yes, Dr. Graham?
On, oops, lost my page here. The Children's College, I can see the others, you know, that the market calls for that, but why are we increasing the Children's College from 80 to 125? I mean, that's not market-driven.
Children are market-driven, Dr. Graham.
Yeah, but it says to comply with vendors' prices. Which vendor?
Yeah, so, a lot of these are done through Ed2Go. That's an online vendor.
The Children's?
Even the Children's College. So, that particular class, PIE 681, is done through Ed2Go. And because the vendor has raised their prices, we're passing that along to the parents.
To the poor little kids.
Well, to the parents.
That are low-income, trying to get their children educated, and we're going to pass this along to.
I'm afraid we do have to cover the costs of those particular courses.
Any other questions? There's a motion second. Pam, we're ready?
This is for item 7.3 only, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Exer. Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
No.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Item 7.4, consideration and deliberation on the approval of continuing education tuition rates for revised courses.
Move to approve?
Questions? Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
I'm sorry, I thought that we were voting on the one with the children. My other one was yes, this one is no.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Fiero. Item 9.0, unfinished business.
Executive, please.
"The Board of Trustees may conduct an executive or closed session pursuant to Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code for one or more of the following reasons: consultation with its attorney to seek or receive legal advice, or consultation regarding pending or contemplated litigation, or for any purpose authorized by law; discussion about the value or transfer of real property; discussion about a prospective gift or donation; consideration of specific personnel matters; discussion about security, personnel, or devices; or discussion of certain economic development matters. The Board may also announce that it will go into executive session on any item listed on this agenda, if the subject matter is permitted, for a closed session by provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Any vote regarding these items shall be taken in open session." Time is 7:38 PM, and the board is being called back into regular session. Chair Fario.
Thank you so much, Pam. That means more, that's more than one, yes, yes. Thank you, Ms. Peyton. Can you please tell, remind us of our next board meeting?
Facilities and Finance at 4:30 PM on March 21st.
Motion to adjourn.
And, did you want another regular meeting? The regular meeting on March the 29th.
Motion to adjourn again.
Second.